Good evening, welcome to the April 5th meeting of the Ashland School Committee. We're here tonight to interview our third finalist for the position of Superintendent of Schools. I'm going to begin with our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools is committed to being at the forefront of student achievement by preparing students to be college and career ready while promoting independence, respect, and critical thinking skills necessary to succeed as problem solvers in the 21st century. So, we will proceed tonight as follows. We will begin with an opening statement by our candidate. After that, the board will take turns. We have a series of questions to ask, perhaps some follow-ups, and then we'll end by giving you an opportunity for a closing statement.
Great.
All right. So, let's begin by turning it over to you for your opening statement.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
I haven't introduced you, and I apologize.
That's okay.
I'm getting a little slow. This is Susan Cody. She's currently the Superintendent of East Bridgewater Schools. Welcome.
Thanks. Thanks, and I want to thank the administrators that are here, leaving their families probably for the fourth or fifth day in a row to do this. As an opening statement, I spent some time in your schools today and was really impressed and thrilled with what I saw. I am leaving East Bridgewater for reasons, we'll probably talk about that or I will in my closing statement, but have only really applied to three other districts, and Ashland was one of them because Ashland, I believe, has some unique opportunities for a superintendent. And among them, one thing, the size of the school, the school department, it's very similar to the school department that I'm in now with about 200 students per grade level, and I think that gives the superintendent a unique opportunity to be in a system where they can roll up their sleeves and really get in and involved with teaching and learning, and that's what I am very interested in. The other reason that I was interested in Ashland was because of some of the initiatives that you have moving forward, some of the things that I've been involved with as far as especially your technology engineering or your STEM program. I spent some time at the Department of Education as the statewide science coordinator, and my role was overseeing the writing of the Science and Technology Education Curriculum Frameworks. And I did have a colleague that was on the technology engineering side, but that is something that we've been growing in East Bridgewater. Our new high school will have a brand-new technology engineering wing with a technology engineering program for the middle school and the high school with a robotics room in the middle, and that's something that we really worked very hard with the MSBA to push forward for our new school. So, that was something that made me very interested in Ashland. And I think even just your mission statement that you just read with the word "forefront", I just found that to be really interesting. I've not ever seen that in any school district's mission statement, but when you say you want to be at the forefront, that means something. That means that you want to be out in front, you want to be a leader, and this community really wants to be at the cutting edge of what's going on. So, I found that to be very unique and very interesting, and that's what drew me here. So, I'm very thrilled to be a finalist and very excited about the day that I had today. I saw a lot of fantastic things.
Thank you.
Hi, Pat.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
If you're selected as superintendent, could you describe how Ashland will look in five years? Will we move forward? Will we change?
I think you've got a very young administrative team, a very young leadership team, which I think is fabulous. You can feel the energy when you are around them. So, I think five years from now, hopefully, they will still be here and still be as passionate about what they're doing, but I see in their eyes, you can see the energy, and you can see the ideas, and you can see the passion, and I think that's fabulous for this district because I think you'll have a team that will help you to move this district forward where it needs to be. We've got, one of the biggest things that's happening right now in the state of Massachusetts is the new, and that reminds me, I don't think I shut mine off, so, the new teacher evaluation tool. And I think that that is going to change teaching and learning pretty significantly. So, this is a great time, I think, for Ashland to really get involved with taking a look at their teachers and what effective teaching means to them, and to make some changes that they need to make to build that trust between the leadership team and the staff, which is really what you need, that collaboration and that trust. So, I would like to say that if I were here, I would have the ability to add something to that and really focus on building relationships between the teachers and the administrative team, working to really build the influence that your young leadership team has in the district, and give them some ownership and take a look at their new ideas and where they want to go and take advantage of that, and hopefully keep this district at the forefront, keep it moving forward.
Okay. Would you like a minute to turn off your phone? Is it going to distract you?
I would like a minute to turn off my phone.
I just know that when it's like that, it distracts me, too.
And mine never rings, but it will ring. Oh, actually, I left it in my car, so I'm all set.
Mine was off. Yes, mine's off.
I see that you can make a mistake too, Miss.
I imagine that.
Okay. Remember to roll.
I'm on my next one, Susan.
We have a lot of fun.
That's okay.
So, what do you believe is the single most important thing a superintendent can do to set the tone or climate for the school district?
I think there are probably a couple of things, a couple of different directions I'd like to go, and in one of them, I think, really is being somebody that has an open-door policy, being a person that is approachable, being somebody that really values relationships, somebody that is focused on bringing the best out of everyone. So, I think that is one thing that a superintendent, one skill they need to have. They need to be a relationship builder, they need to be somebody that likes people, that's open and honest, and that really works to build that collaboration and that trust among the staff. And I think the other thing is really somebody that has an expertise in, and we've talked about this a lot today, teaching and learning and what effective teaching looks like, and really trying to build a common understanding of the expectations of the Ashland School District, what effective teaching looks like, what is expected of the teachers, helping to, you know, every teacher, every administrator, including myself, constantly in that cycle of growth and modeling that for the district, making sure that my administrative team knows what my growth areas are and helps me to build in those areas, that the administrative team, their staff, knows where their growth areas are, and they make sure that the staff understands that, and their staff is helping them to grow all the time. So, I think that's the other thing that is most important, is really building that climate of collaboration and trust, but setting those expectations high because in order to work in Ashland, you need to be effective at your job. And if you are not effective and if you're not growing, then you need to find another place to work because Ashland's expectations are that everyone is in that constant cycle of growth and getting better and better all the time.
So, I'm next. What are your top priorities for Ashland students, just based on what you've learned about us so far?
Well, that's difficult because I've really, I've done a lot of research, been here for a day, so it's, I'll probably say things, and then if I were your superintendent two years from now, say, "Why did I say that?" Because I don't know much about the district and the kids. But I definitely was very impressed going into the high school, for example, with the real, talking about those core values that they're really trying to push with the high school students. It was most impressive because, like I said, a lot of times administrators feel that because they're working on something and they have an initiative, that it really is working and that the kids get it and the teachers get it, but to walk in and talk to students, and when I asked them, "What's the best thing about Ashland High School?", to have them say to me, "It's really different now than it was two years ago. It's really a great place because we're really focused with our new principle on respect and responsibility and accountability, and to be able to have the students be able to say that to you, they see it, they know it, they feel it." So, there is that change going on. So, I think seeing that throughout the district is really important. We have responsive classroom in East Bridgewater. It's a social skills curriculum that we have found to be extremely successful, and every teacher grades pre-K to 3 right now has been trained. We're moving it into the 4th and 5th grade, and it really has changed the atmosphere in the buildings. The students see themselves as their classrooms are a community, they're part of that community, they're responsible for the other students within that community. And, I mean, you walk into the schools in East Bridgewater, students open doors for you, they say, "Please", they say, "Thank you". It's something that I am very impressed with, and it's taken a lot of work, but I think that's something that first and foremost is something that I see Ashland really moving toward, and I see it making a difference. But also, we had talked a little bit about the number of AP courses in the district, and we talked a little bit today, the school committee and I, about those middle-of-the-road kids and those kids that aren't in the AP classes, and really focusing on what can we do for them. We've got a lot of opportunities for our high-performing students, but what are we missing with those middle students? What opportunities do they need? What are we missing with them? And really, really turning the focus on what we can do for those students to make sure they stay in school, they graduate, and they go on to either a career or the service or a two- or four-year school. So, I think that, I would say, here in Ashland, that's probably something that I would look at as the next priority.
Thank you.
Okay, based on what you know about our administration's process of budget development, maybe from your discussions this morning with the administrators, what will your particular skills add or bring to that process if you should become our new superintendent?
I think Ashland, that process is very similar to East Bridgewater as far as the in-house process. I believe in site-based management. I'm not a superintendent that makes budget decisions. The administrative team really needs to be part of those decisions. They know their building best, they know their programs best. I think that what I've built in East Bridgewater, we used to be three separate schools, and we've really focused over the last three years on being a K-12 district and really looking at, okay, from pre-K to 12, what are our priorities? And the administrators really have come to the table looking at it as what's best for all the students. It used to be, what do I need for my school? My school is the most important. So, I think making sure that we're looking at one student's, you know, travels through pre-K to 12 and what the priorities are in the district. I know that Ashland does work that way. I know that your leadership team has a lot of input. I came to your state of the schools presentation and was extremely impressed with what I saw. I saw administrators that were passionate, they know their buildings, and they were able to stand in front of the public, and you had a good 200 people there. I mean, in East Bridgewater right now, we may have 30 that would have shown up, so that tells you something. People are interested in the schools, they're invested in the schools, and they were able to stand up and say what we're doing that's great, and then they were able to say what they needed and what their needs were. And what I like about Ashland is, we were talking with the selectmen earlier, Masha and I, about the tri-team that you have with the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen and the school committee. That's essential. That's something I'm missing in my district and part of the reason that I'm leaving because, you know, it tends to be a fight between the schools and the municipal side often. The schools end up, I mean, in reality, they have the largest staff, and they end up spending the most money out of any department. In most districts, it's 50 to 60 percent of the town budget goes to the schools, and oftentimes, especially when there are budget cuts, it ends up being a real tough battle. And for you to be able to say that you've got that committee that really sits down and looks at the needs of the town, and when I heard Barbara say that the town was going to fund at least two of those new programs that you were looking at, I mean, that's a huge step that you have taken that many districts have not. So, I see that as being extremely important, and you've been able to accomplish that, and that's something that I would be very excited about being part of.
Could I just elaborate a little bit? You talked a little bit about when you first got to East Bridgewater, you had three separate buildings, and how it's become closer to what we do, more of a collaborative approach. Can you talk about some of the techniques you utilized to bring it to that level?
I think it's just continuously working with your leadership team. I mean, the leadership team is so important, but it's funny how little an elementary principal knows about scheduling a high school. So, when you talk to an elementary principal and you're talking about class size, and you're asking your high school principal, "What's the class size?", it's very easy to say in a middle school because kids travel together and the schedule is really built around that. So, you really can talk about class size and scheduling, and they understand it, but they don't understand a high school schedule. So, we spent a lot of time talking about, we have a very large pre-K to 3 building, and that elementary principal spent a lot of time talking to the administrators, the other administrators, about early literacy and RTI and the need for why their adult-student ratio ratios really needed to be a lot smaller, and how you schedule RTI so that students get one-on-one and small-group instruction. My high school principal had never experienced that, didn't understand that, and we did the same thing with our middle school and our high school, really educating each other about how you build a high school schedule, why you might have an AP class with eight students in it, and that's okay. That doesn't mean you cancel the class and those kids don't get that opportunity. So, I think it took us a lot of conversation in educating each other about the unique qualities of each of those levels because they're very different. So, that has helped us to, I think, appreciate the different levels and the struggles that they go through.
Thank you.
Oh, I think I'm up. Okay. Describe for us how you will improve the overall quality of staff, including how you will deal with all staff, staff who may be underperforming, staff who are doing just fine but maybe need a little to be energized, and staff who are really doing a super job, and we want to motivate them and reward them for their good work.
As I feel like I'm repeating myself so much because I've talked to so many people, but my dissertation, I'm in the middle of that right now, and it's on effective teaching, and it's a passion of mine, teaching and learning. And we spoke a little bit today when I met you for lunch, and we talked about teaching and learning, so I'm going to repeat myself a little bit, but years ago, I think that people believed that teachers were born to teach, and it was an art, and it was a craft, and some people were born to do it and others were not. And there's been a lot of research over the past 50 years about teaching and what effective teaching is, and in the early years of that research, they really thought that effective teachers were teachers that had master's degrees. And they found in that research that the master's degrees made little difference. They looked at teachers, you know, their core content areas, courses that they took in college, they looked at their MTEL scores, and it really came down to the one thing that really made a difference was what went on in the classroom that teacher walked in and closed the door. And research really has shown that there are specific things that teachers, that effective teachers do, and that information, John Safia and Charlotte Danielson, there's a lot of people that have done that research, really has been the basis of our evaluation tool in Massachusetts. And I think it's important that when you're looking at a teaching staff, like with any other profession, there are going to be the stars, there are going to be people that are average, and there are going to be people that need work. I don't know any teacher that goes into this profession that does not want to be the best that they can be, but I think we have a lot of teachers that really don't maybe know what good teaching is, what is it that you're looking for, what are those things that really make a teacher effective? So, I think there needs to be a lot of conversation and professional development, and this is the perfect time for it, when you're changing the evaluation tool, to really sit down with staff and really take a look at what does good teaching look like. Look at those rubrics that we're going to be using to evaluate them and really start to talk about, what does this look like in a classroom? What do effective teachers do? So, I think the expectation has to be that everybody is constantly growing, and for those teachers that are not growing, I think it's important that, you know, when I came to East Bridgewater, everyone had a wonderful evaluation, you know, wonderful evaluation. And when you walked into the classrooms, there was clearly a difference from one room to the next. I think administrators have to be courageous enough to be able to have the hard discussions, but it's easier to have the hard discussions when you're speaking a common language and when teachers understand the expectation, they understand what they should be doing, and it's much easier than to sit down and say, "This is the evidence I have that either you are doing it or you're not doing it." And I think the primary thing that we talk about, East Bridgewater, we had a retreat with the administrative team, the first year I was superintendent, that was really focused on supervision. What does that word mean? And in many cases, teachers see it as, "And I got you. You're trying to find me doing something wrong." And that's not what supervision is. Supervision is the coaching and the support and the, "How can I help you? You know, let's sit down together, let's take a look at where you are, where you need to grow, and how can I help you get there?". Providing them that support, but also making sure that they understand the expectation is that you do get there, and if you don't get there, then you just can't be part of our team because our expectation is that everybody is an effective teacher. So, I think that this is the perfect time to start to have those conversations again.
Thank you.
That's you, Pat. Okay, please discuss the differences in our administrative structure with what you are currently experiencing, and describe how you believe you would be able to add value to our current structure.
You know, it's interesting, you say, "How I can add value". I definitely feel that this administrative structure is going to add value to what I can do for the town. I firmly believe that. I was the assistant superintendent in East Bridgewater, and because of budget cuts, when I became the superintendent, we made the decision to eliminate the assistant superintendent's position because we had a real severe need to keep teachers, and that was our focus. But I am desperately missing an essential component in my leadership team, and that's either assistant superintendent or a director of curriculum. You cannot have a district that does not have that position, you can't with a district this size. And I think that, it's an interesting question, what value I can bring. I think, in my mind, that value is to continue to allow this leadership team to take ownership for what they're doing, to allow them to take risks, to continue the bonding that they've been doing because they've been in a difficult position, and they've depended on each other to survive, and that has built some very strong relationships among them. So, I think the value that I can bring is just to keep that moving and to make sure that their voice is heard and make sure that I support them. But I almost see it as just the opposite, that I have the opportunity to come to a district that has the pieces in place, a very strong business manager that has walked in the shoes of a superintendent and therefore will understand, I think, a little bit more of the big picture of that role, a curriculum director that's a seasoned person that knows what she's doing and that adds a lot of value to the system, and an administrative team that's young and very, they're zealots, you know, they want to get in there and get going with some great ideas. So, I almost see it as, I wish I could say that I was going to bring something fabulously new and some value to that. I think you've got what it takes right here. You need somebody to step in and appreciate that and support them.
Okay, thank you.
You're very tired. A little giddy.
Long couple of weeks. Okay, so, there's always a small percentage of students who do not qualify for special education, yet they struggle with attendance and work completion and overall school success. What is your vision for supporting these students and assuring their success in public education?
That's probably the $1,000 question right now, especially because my experience tells me that with all these budget cuts, those are the programs that have gone to the wayside, and those are the students that are suffering right now because they've lost some of those supports. So, I know that you've got an RTI program that you've implemented here, and I'm hearing that it's going up into the high school, and I think that's extremely important to really have that program in place, to have a staff that knows how to identify what the students' needs are, to have a staff that's able to prescribe what's needed for those students. We have, in East Bridgewater, we've been able to keep some of our support systems in place, but we've lost a lot of the, our teaching assistants and people like that that used to provide some extra support. But I think that, you know, in talking about the high school level, I mean, there are some students that really aren't, are not going to make it in a traditional high school. There are going to be students that need something different, and I think that we need to be able to identify who those students are and help them get the education that they need to finish high school, and there will always be that small population. I think another very important thing for kids, to keep them engaged in coming to school. It's interesting, there is a lot of research around new high schools, and it's incredible how a new high school will increase your attendance, increase your graduation rate because kids come to school and they feel proud to be here, and they feel invested, and it's a place that they want to come. I think having, I don't know if you have a mentor, mentee program or an advisory program, but I was telling your, I believe, high school principal today that I attended a workshop at Harvard. They do summer workshops every summer, and it's always great to say that you went to Harvard for a week, even if it's just a week. And they had a fabulous speaker that was talking about high school kids, and even the best kids, when they leave high school and they're asked, "What is the one thing you would have changed about your schooling? Could you go back and change it?". And the majority of them said, "I wish I had better, stronger relationships with an adult in the building." So, I think it's just critical in schools to have students that have at least one person that they trust that they can go to, that they can relate to, somebody that knows them, somebody that really knows them. And I asked your, I don't know what grade level it was, but I think they were probably at the 3, 4, 5 building today. Do you all have an adult that you know you could go to and talk to, that you can relate to, and everyone raised their hand? So, I think that's key, having a small enough ratio where kids know there's an adult that they can go to if they need something. I also think having those supports in place so that there are alternatives for students, credit recovery programs at the high school for students that need, that are not in line to graduate in four years, but sometimes kids grow up by the time they're a junior, and having those credit recovery programs are really important. At the elementary school, early literacy, having a strong early literacy program is, I think, the most important thing that a district can have, and really having students leave grade three, reading at grade level. And we, I was talking again to some, I feel like I'm repeating myself so much today, but, you know, you look at a school budget, and most of the time, it's built this way where the elementary students get a little, and then the middle school get a little more, and the high school is the pride and joy, and it's the jewel of the system. And we certainly want that high school to stay with that status, but I think that we're missing the mark if we really don't focus some energies on those early grades and make sure that every student comes out of 3rd grade, reading at grade level, feeling confident with their skills, because if they don't, you're constantly putting Band-Aids on them. And those are the kids that hit 7th grade, and they're going to go the wrong way because they don't feel successful, they don't have the confidence they need, and if you can solve that problem when they come out of that 3rd grade, you've really made some progress. I hope I answered that question. I feel like I'm going around in circles.
Thank you. I'm next, and I asked you earlier about your top priorities for the students, and now I'm wondering, what are your top priorities for the staff and administration? What do you value most in your team?
You know, I would say people that are passionate about what they do, people that are committed to what they do, people that are willing to admit when they make mistakes. That's a big one with me because we don't always do the right thing, and I think it's important that we learn from our mistakes and that people know that it's okay to take risks, that we value that. But I think it's that commitment, the ability to say that I don't know everything, that I may be a really good teacher, but I have areas where I need to improve. So, teachers that are willing to say that, that are willing to, it's funny, again, we talked earlier about our stars. I've got some fabulous teachers in East Bridgewater that don't want to be at the front of the line, they don't want attention on them, they don't want to run professional developments, workshops, because they don't want to feel like, you know, they're good at what they do. I think you need to identify those stars, you need to nourish them, you need to really give them opportunities to shine and give them opportunities to share what they know. So, I think, you know, my priorities would be to, I'm sorry, did you say priorities for them?
I said both. I said priorities and values.
Values.
What do you value, and then what are your priorities in terms of working with them?
I think it's really people that are committed to what they do, they're passionate about what they do, they're honest, and they're open. I am as open as can be, and sometimes it's gotten me in trouble because I don't like to dance around things. So, I think knowing that you have a relationship with your whole staff where people feel that they can be honest about what they feel, they're willing to take risks, and when they make a mistake, say that they did and move on, know that they are constantly growing and that they value what they do, they're passionate about what they do. It's so much of those hard things to really quantify that I think really is what you value in people that you work with. And, you know, we talk often about, you know, I'm the superintendent, and when I go into a classroom, people look terrified, like, "Oh, my God, what is she looking for?". You know, it's taken me a little while in East Bridgewater, but I'm able to walk into a classroom and people will welcome me in, and it's because they trust me. I'm not there to find out what they're doing wrong, I'm there to be part of the climate and the culture, and they trust that whatever I see is going to be something that I'm going to work with them on and not share with everybody, so that's really important.
Thank you.
Okay, can you describe your current education contacts at the state level and help us understand how those contacts may help Ashland in the future?
Yeah, sure. I mean, where I worked there for three, for one year, when I was a principal, I was an elementary principal in a pre-K to 3 building for three years, and I was... And I was very privileged and honored to be selected to come out of that on a sabbatical for a year to work at the Department of Education as the statewide science coordinator. So I would say as far as contacts at the Department of Ed, people change all the time. But I think it's important to, I'm able to call, there's a hotline number certainly for superintendents, so whenever I have questions or licensure problems or issues, that hotline is available. Melissa Williams, who's the Title I coordinator there at the Department of Ed, she and I have a good relationship. We do have a Title I program in East Bridgewater. We use our Title I funds for early literacy and our reading specialists. So the contacts there with Title I have been extremely helpful for us. I just think knowing that, it's interesting, I teach graduate courses, and I will say to my students, you should email the commissioner. I mean, the commissioner will answer your emails, and he will do it within 24 hours. So I'm never afraid to email somebody there. The climate of the Department of Ed has changed because they're, unfortunately, they got a really bad rap for not being warm and fuzzy, always being out to get you type of thing. And this, Dave Driscoll, who was the last commissioner, and this new commissioner have really worked hard to make sure that they're focused on, you know, human service. When you call there, you'll get somebody that knows the answer, and if they don't know, they'll send you to somebody else. And they will respond to you, and that's quite different than it used to be. So I think just as far as contacts, you know, I don't have any more contacts than any other superintendent, but I think it's realizing that if you have a question, you call the legal department, they will answer your question, and if they don't know, they'll go somewhere else. If you have a question or a problem, as far as talking to the commissioner, he will answer your emails, he will call you back. So that's something that I've really taken advantage of. And I oftentimes will, as far as, you know, Melissa Williams, who's fabulous, if I work with her and she does something for us, I will email the commissioner and say, I want to let you know, Melissa Williams is our Title I liaison, she answered some questions for me today, she was able to really provide information that I needed, she's really, should be commended because she's an important part of your staff. So you always need to send the commissioner those emails to really tell him who his stars are because they don't hear it a lot. And you really build some relationships that way.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask you about schools in a community like Ashland and probably East Bridgewater. They're one of the larger employers, they're a huge part, as you mentioned, of the town budget. They're really a big part of the community, and the superintendent is the face of the schools and has all the interaction with the parents and, as you know, the select. Tell me about your philosophy about how to integrate a school into a community and how to build those relationships and how you see that working in a community like Ashland.
You know, I think it's critical, we're fortunate, we've got many residents of East Bridgewater that are teachers. We have less than we used to, but we still have a lot of people that are. But I think that, you know, first of all, your teachers are your front lines. Whenever anything happens in the school, that would be an emergency basis or a crisis, or you've got a child that has passed away, or you've got, the dogs came into the high school. Every year, we do the annual, the dogs come in and they go through the school, and we do that on an annual basis, and we've really been successful without, you know, having to have a lot of problems with that. But whenever you do that, I always notify the whole teaching staff. So I will let them know if something has happened in school, that is something that's either an emergency or unusual or something that I know the public is going to hear about because your teachers are your front line. When they go out to the supermarket, when they go out into public, the parents will ask them, I heard that you had a drug bust at the high school today, and five kids were caught with marijuana, when really it was, we did our annual search, the dogs came in, we found a car in the parking lot that had seeds in the ashtray. Yes, that is what happened, but they'll be able to, I think, really work to help advocate and get the truth out there. So I think communicating with the staff is really important because they are your front line. You know, I don't really know, I couldn't really tell you step by step what you do to really build that type of climate in a school district, but I think that it really all stems from having that team feeling, having people really take pride in what they do. And again, one of the reasons that I'm leaving East Bridgewater is, you've met many of my staff, and I think one of the comments you made was, you know, how much pride they had in what they did. And that's something that really takes time to build, but it comes with everything that I've already said, with that collaboration, that trust, and building that pride. And, you know, teachers, when they have that pride in what they do, and when they feel like they're respected by the community, they will be there for you when you need them. They will be there doing those after-school activities, they will be there at the games watching the kids play, they will come out on a weekend to go to a play, they'll be visible in the schools because that's what people do when they're proud of what they do and when they take pride in their schools. They want to be part of that educational community. So I think it really, it just sounds kind of mushy and kind of warm and fuzzy, but I think it really comes from that feeling respected, feeling proud of what they do, knowing that their administrative team values them and takes pride in them. And that's when you build that passion for them to really want to be there and be part of that, that great thing that's going on. I think opportunities, certainly opportunities to interface with the public, having them come to school committee meetings and talk at school committee meetings, giving teachers the opportunity to get out there in the public is important. But I think they do it on their own when they take great pride in what they do.
Okay, thank you.
I wish I could be more specific with this.
No, that's fine.
Here's the three steps, and this is what you do.
No, no, that's fine.
Because I don't think it's that easy.
No, of course not. Does anybody have any other questions, or should we finish with number 10, or we had anything else?
Oh, I have a, you want to finish with 10?
No, I think, let's go with yours and then finish with 10.
Well, I wanted to go back a little bit to your discussion on coaching and support and sort of get a little more understanding on how that would, how you would see the rollout of the new curriculum frameworks and the teacher assessment that are coming down, you know, are going to be big challenges for us next year, certainly. I'm sure you're already thinking about that. So would you have some view as to, you know, based on what you've seen around Ashland today and your research, what, you know, sort of a general approach in your leadership in that area?
I think it would be the same anywhere. I don't think it's anything particular to one community or another, but I think the new evaluation tool really is going to be very difficult for teachers. I think that knowing that they don't have a planned time when an administrator will come into their classroom and sit for a 45-minute block and watch them in one prepared block of time, and know that from now on, they're going to be judged by people coming in and out of their classroom at any time of the day and watching what they do, is really something that is terrifying to teachers. I think it is. So I think when you're talking about coaching and teaching and learning and that, you know, you really have to set a, you have to put in place a protocol where you're working with teachers, where you've got that pre-conference that people take very seriously, where you're set, where teachers are setting goals, you're really working with those teachers to set goals that really are going to be not, I'm going to develop a new math unit next year, but it's a goal that really is going to improve their teaching. So teachers, I mean, SMART goals are the big thing now. Teachers don't know how to write SMART goals. We don't know how to write SMART goals, we're just learning, it's something brand new. But really, teaching teachers to be able to write goals that really are going to change practice and really are going to improve what they do. So I think the process has to be, you know, you're already well on your way, you're already looking at the rubrics with those teachers, but I think you really need to, first of all, have common language. Everybody has to know, I mean, I was trained in observing teachers, and we use terms like provisioning and dipsticking and things like that. Teachers don't know what that means. So I think you have to have a common language of what does good teaching look like? What am I going to be looking for when I go into the classroom? I think you have to understand, teachers have to learn to write good goals, so do we, goals that really are going to change the way they practice and not just something that they're going to do, and really work toward those goals. The administrative team, this is going to be a struggle for them because when you look at the, I mean, my administrators now, some of them evaluate 25 to 30 teachers a year, and that takes a lot of time to do it well. And this new evaluation system has them even out of their office more often, which we all know is important, but there is so much management, especially with these unfunded mandates that go on, that these principals find it very difficult to get away from their office out into the classrooms. So I think it's really putting in place a protocol where you've got that common language, where you've got an expect, people understand what you're looking for, they understand what effective teaching looks like, you're sitting at pre- and post-conferences with them and really having the difficult conversations because it's not easy to tell somebody that I'm not seeing the growth in you that I really would like to see. But if you don't have the common language and clear expectations, then how do they know what you want? So, you know, I think the process would continue from what they're already doing and really take a look at what does good teaching and learning look like, get, developing that common language with the staff and making sure we're all talking that same language, making the expectations extremely clear. This is what effective teaching is, this is where we want you all to be, and we'll give you time to get there, but we won't give you too much time. We expect to see change, so. Again, I wish that was more too, black and white, but I think your administrative team is really halfway there. You're already talking to the teachers about those rubrics, and that's key. You'd be surprised how little teachers know about what people are looking for when they go into their classroom. You think that would be natural, of course they know what they're looking for. I've had administrators observe me and say, I looked very professional and had wonderful bulletin boards. I mean, what does that have to do with teaching and learning? So I think that's all part of educating them.
Thank you. I was just going to say.
No, I'm good for the moment.
I just wanted, I want to end, go back to the question that was on our list, because, and I think it's a segue a little bit into your closing statement. Tell us about what you've learned about our community, and it sounds like, you know, between, we've talked a lot about what you've already learned, but given that, why do you feel you'll be our best fit for superintendent?
I feel that I'll be your best fit because I hear you talking about where my passion is, and that really is effective teaching. I hear a school committee that really is looking for somebody that can come in, that can help the administrative team, really take a look at what are our expectations here for our staff, and really be able to identify and help those teachers that can get there, get there. And I'm pretty enthused about the fact that you're talking about teaching and learning, not every school committee does. You know, I've sat with school committees that were great people, but very interested in why we don't have floats at homecoming and things like that, and, you know, I don't, and it's really, it's very difficult to work. Again, I've got a fabulous school committee, and I would never speak badly about them, they are fabulous people, but I've worked with school committee members that really were more interested in the floats at homecoming and, you know, why somebody wasn't captain the basketball team instead of teaching and learning. So I think that that is incredible in itself, that you realize that that's a priority. So again, I've lost the question, where am I?
I was just looking for why you think you're the best fit.
And I think that's why, I think that you're ready for this, I think you've got an administrative team. I can see, just walking through the buildings, you get a sense there's a different climate in each of the buildings, and I get a sense that there are maybe a few places where some work is needed as far as that goes. And I think a lot of it has to do with people just really knowing what the expectations are, and they'll meet those expectations and just making them very clear. And, you know, I get a feeling that there's new leadership, and the staff always questions new leadership, especially if somebody's been there for years that was beloved, and somebody new steps in, they're tough shoes to fill. And I think that the staff needs help with building that relationship with their staff. So I think that this is really a good fit for me, and it's very exciting to know that, that the floats at homecoming are the major topic of conversation here. That's really refreshing.
They really have floats, don't we? Maybe we should talk about that.
Yes, we talk a lot.
Don't give us any ideas.
Talk a lot about floats.
All right. So if there are no other questions from the committee, then I'm going to ask you to just finish with a closing statement.
I don't even know what to say at this point. I mean, I'm thrilled to be here. I am leaving here excited about the people that I've met, and I've said this before and I'll say it again, I mean, you've got a business manager that stepped up, maybe she was under the gun a little bit, I'm not sure, but she definitely has stepped up, and I have not heard one person say a bad word about her. And that's the second person in command. So I think just looking at the opportunity to work with somebody that is as professional and that really has stepped up, your high school principal has stepped up, and he's a newbie here. You know, he stepped up and filled those holes to work with a district that values the curriculum director because it is a very important position, and to hear her talk about backwards planning and things that I say, wow, she really gets it, this is a person that really gets it. I think that's very exciting for me. I know that there are, you've had some difficult times here, and I've read the articles and the blogs, but as you know, I've been the subject of articles and blogs myself, and no longer read the Brockton Enterprise. In fact, my whole school committee has stopped their subscription to the Brockton Enterprise. So I know that that stuff goes on, but I think that every superintendent is different, every leader comes in with a different perspective and builds different relationships. So I think that's a unique opportunity for me as well. And I don't know, I just, I'm just excited about everything that I see here. I'll be honest with you, I was nervous. I was nervous about what I read in the papers. I was nervous about some of the things that I've heard from other people and about some of the changes that have gone on and the reasons that superintendents have left. And you don't want to work for a school committee that does not know their role. You want to work with a school committee that knows that their role is budget and their role is policy, and they're there to support their administrative team, that they're not there to make personnel decisions, that, and I think that's important that, you know, because every school committee member wants to get involved in that. You've got kids in the system, you know the teachers, you know the good ones, you know the bad ones, and you want to get involved. But, you know, I think it's exciting that you've got a school committee that really, you know, does know what their role is and is really invested in that, and a community that has built very quickly, it's grown very quickly, and that you've really had their support, to see this new building be supported. And when I left here three years ago, to hear that a new building was going up with no athletic fields, I thought, oh my God, they're missing the mark, what's going to happen three years from now? And it happened, and you've had a group of people that came together and said, we need better for our kids, and they came together and they pushed that through, and you've got a community that accepted that. The parents that I've met have been really invested, and they want the best for their kids. So I'm really excited that I may have the opportunity to join this team.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming and for spending the day with us.
It's been an exhausting day, but for you, I can't imagine what you've gone through.
I appreciate that, for sure.
And I appreciate it, and if I don't see you again, I hope to, and if I don't, you've got a good thing going here. You guys hang in there and you stick together because you know what you're doing, and just keep, just keep plugging along because you're going to get there. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if there's nothing more?
That's fine.
I'm plugged in. We're going to take a motion?
So more to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Good night, everybody.